Called the meeting of the Postal Community School District Board of Education into session. Welcome all members in the room and out there in the crazy TV world. Look for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made me second by Greg. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Any items removed from the consent agenda? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, motion by Greg, second by Eric. To approve this, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Superintendent's report.
So I did a little packet in the middle here. If you can get to that. I'm just going to go over a few items with this. This is something that I've worked with and refined over the last nineteen years of being a superintendent. And coming down to the most, probably the most valuable pieces to be aware of as a school board comes from this information. We're talking about, I'm just going to go through it all, and if you have questions, just ask me, but hopefully had some time to look it over. It's true, it's a true snapshot of where our district stands at the moment, and you'll find that-
What page you on? Oh wait.
Thirty-nine. Sorry for the long packet this month. This was, this was a doozy. It was eighty-six pages, which-
It was like thirty pages of lunch reimbursement.
Yeah, that's not the most exciting part of it. Anyway, so our enrollment this year, you know that enrollment is tied to funding, and enrollment did go up a little bit, net gain, which is very good. Students in seats went up four point six, which was good, and we've, we've experienced two years of declining enrollment, so it was nice to see that improve. And then you can see the chart for the last twenty years. It's gone up and down like a roller coaster, ebb and flow, if you want to say, that. But we're at six ninety-four this year. Supplemental waiting, this is where we get extra funding for at-risk English learners and sharing with other schools. And we're at fifty-six point six five zero for that. And moving on to special ed waiting, our special ed count did go up a little bit. And, and this is, this is for all students with IEPs that get a little extra funding. And so that's, that's that number. It's just something to be aware of. Our free reduced percentages were at eighty point four six percent this year, and as you can see, the trend line for the last five years is roughly around eighty percent for post-Phil. General fund, this is, this is by far our largest, largest fund that we have. It's usually around ten million dollars, and this year, our last fiscal year, you can see that our revenue did exceed our expenditures by about nine hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand. And so that was, that was good. And you can see the trend lines for the last five fiscal years is, as costs increase a little bit, so does our revenue too. General fund balances, this is the part where this is basically just cash in the bank for the school system. And five years ago, we were negative cash status, and now we're, we've turned that around. We're at one point six five million. And that's from a big influx of federal money coming in to the school system. So solvency ratio is a, is a number that's very important, and our, just from paying bills for Melissa, I'm trying to think of the right term for solvency. It's just a statement of where the district stands with cash. Yeah. It basically is just giving us a number that we can use to gauge our cash balance. And our ratio right now was four point eight percent. And the board, the board's goal is between seven and seventeen percent, so we're right in the middle of our, the school board has placed a goal on that. And you can see the trend for the last few years, so that's been a good, very positive thing. Unspent balance, spending authority, this is probably the most important or second most important number to be aware of, and our unspent balance did go up from two point seven million to three point seven million over one fiscal year. And that's attributed to some of the federal money that we've gotten for the, from the pandemic. And our unspent balance ratio has gone up to, and the board's goal is between eleven and twenty percent. And we're at twenty-seven point three, which is pretty, sitting pretty well for, for a school of our size, so we're very pleased about that number. So I'm going to break down some of the significant factors for all the different funds. General fund, the board did approve instructional support levy last year, and that generates about three hundred and forty-four thousand every year, and that goes through fiscal year twenty-nine. Shared operational functions with neighboring districts, we, the maximum we can get is twenty-one. And right now, we're sharing, we've got twelve for this year. Trent from MFL Marmac, Jeanette from Allen McKee, and then Melissa shared with North Valley. As far as enrollment goes, the enrollment count, enrollment count did go up. And this is probably the biggest change for all of us, is the change in open enrollment law, where we did have an increase in open enrollments out. We still have nineteen enrollments in, which is good. That's been consistent. So I'm assuming that that number will level off over time, because this was the first year that that was allowed when we dropped the diversity plan. A big, the biggest item probably is the federal pandemic relief assistance. We did receive three rounds of that, and we get to access that money through fiscal year twenty-four. So we've got two more years of that funding available. Activity fund is fairly stable, but we always look at ways to increase the fund balance. Management fund, that pays for property and casualty insurance, and then the, the teacher early retirement incentives that you approved last year. The save fund is the statewide, statewide sales tax, and we receive around eight hundred and forty thousand annually from that. And that helps with direct property tax relief, because that comes from the sales tax side. The PEPAL physical plant and equipment levy, the community did approve. The voter approved levy through fiscal year thirty-three, and that generates about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So for capital funds, we're getting about a million dollars a year to pay for buses, technology, any facilities upgrades that we might need, so that's very specific towards that. And also paying on our debt, and that's the next one. The debt service, we're at, current debt is at four hundred and fifty-six thousand, and that's for the, the bonds at the rec center. And a couple of years ago, we were able to get the rate reduced to point five nine percent, which was pretty amazing. And we're on target to get that debt retired by twenty, twenty-five, so that's about two and a half years away. And that's about five years ahead of schedule, actually. And then the nutrition fund, this is, this is something that was a pleasant surprise, in that a lot of the federal pandemic money did help our lunch and breakfast program. As you can see, June of twenty twenty, our fund balance was thirty-six thousand, and by June of twenty-two, it had grown to two hundred and thirty-one thousand. So we got a significant amount of extra money from the federal government to help with our food program. That is a lot of information. If you have questions, feel free to ask, but that's usually about this time of year, Melissa and I sit down and go through a lot of these numbers and try to come up with a synopsis or a summary for the board to review. And so that's a real high-level look on a lot of facts and details. But overall, I, I'm pleased with where the district is financially. The board has done a good job of managing funds, managing our budget, and I think that reflects in what is shown here in our numbers. If you have any questions.
Do we, do we need to be concerned any about the money not coming in anymore from the pandemic money going forward?
So my, my thing is, is that we reduced staffing through that retirement incentive, so we've kind of adjusted for that a little bit, and with a slight increase in enrollment, I think we're going to level off a little bit. We'll, we won't be made whole with that money from the pandemic relief, but I wouldn't worry about it right now. I think, I think we've made some adjustments when it comes to reducing our staff just a little bit to compensate for our declining enrollment, but now that the enrollment has increased, so now we've got to look back at what we can do to maybe meet the needs of those kiddos that are coming into our district that are extra that we didn't have last year. So it's just a, yeah, you just have to balance it all out, but overall, we did drop FTEs in, in our teaching staff from last year to this year, so.
That's, that's all you have.
Thank you, Mr. Duggar. Mr. Knutson?
First thing I want to announce is that we are very honored. Audrey Ruff, who attended the State Thesbian Festival this weekend, had, had put in an application to be a state officer, which is one of five in the entire state, and she was selected to be a member of the twenty twenty-three State Thesbian Officer Group, which is a great, great honor for her. She works tremendously hard at the art. If you've ever been to our plays or seen her do her speech, she is a fabulous young lady, and that's a very good honor. It's a pretty rigorous application process. So besides some of her normal activities around here, she will also be required to attend some Thesbian state planning. They're in charge of planning next year's festival, plus she will also be a representative to the International Thesbian event, which I'm not sure where that's at yet, but I'm sure we'll be finding that out. So congratulations to her. That's a great honor for, for our school to have a student representing us at the state level. So that's, that happened on Saturday, they announced that, and so we are, we'll be making that more aware through Facebook and in the newspaper and things like that, but wanted to take the opportunity to let the school board know that. And that accredited to Mr., Mr. Frederick and Mrs. Frederick for all the work they've done building that, our speech program and our arts program. So congratulations to all of them for the hard work, and it's certainly paying off. Majority of my report tonight, I'm going to hand out some summaries from our ISAS tests, which were last spring. And again, there's quite a bit of data in here. It's not all the data we use when we're looking at our kids, but it's one of the pieces from the state. On very front page at the bottom, which we're pretty excited about, looking at some of our data, we were a little hesitant, worried. The bottom of this is the state report card, and I, I don't think a lot of people go and look at this. But this is on every school, and it's a combination of a lot of pieces. They're not all listed there, because it goes on and on and on on the state website. You can go look at it, but they use a lot of pieces, examples, participation in the tests, average achievement in the language arts, average achievement in math. The conditions for learning is something that we are required to do every year. And students are asked a lot of questions about the culture and climate of a school and the support of teachers. And graduation rates, growth in math, growth in language arts are all categorized and given percentages to make up this score. And it's kind of a, a little bit of an apples-to-apple comparison, more than just this end-all-be-all testing scores. And I'm not going to go through them, but I can tell you, looking at some of the area schools, the highs that we found, and you can see right below there, it shows the state average, which is a fifty-four point six five, which we were, we dropped about, not quite a percent, or whatever, I think it's like a percent, we'll call it a percent. We dropped under, it was like point eight something we dropped from last year. But area schools, the high of, I would say, our surrounding area, and this is not by size, some of these are bigger schools, but was a sixty point nine three, and there's another area school that's below at fifty point. So we are doing well when we look at our, at the overall scores and our, kind of our comparison. And our biggest attribute, if you also look on that, probably the most exciting, it says acceptable performance, overall performance is acceptable. The last, this is the fourth year of this test, and we had been targeted for the first three years, because we weren't meeting all the criteria they had laid out, and we met that this year. And that is, is exciting, because we, if we don't meet that, then we've got more processes to go through, but what's really nice is before we were targeted, we were already doing the stuff to improve, and so it really didn't affect us. And we're not going to stop doing what we're doing, because we're no longer on a targeted status. And I think the most important thing is, that we're looking at is student growth. We know our challenges, we know our students, and moving them in the right direction is, is the most important thing to us. So I'm going to run through this a little bit, just so you can kind of understand the actual ISAS data. And this is last year, so when it says seventh grade, this is, this is now our eighth graders. And one of the challenging things to look at this is, I look at it and go, okay, the top is us. So if we're looking at the first one, and this will kind of set the stage for the rest of them. The English language total, there's two parts to that test. There's a reading test, and then there's like the grammar piece to that test. And so there's two different pieces to that. There's writing involved with it. And we take those over two different days when we do our spring test. And the far right, the eight percent is our advanced proficient kids, so you really got to add those numbers to see who's all proficient. So, so spring of, for the school, for us, was under language arts, for eighth graders is fifty-seven, with eight being advanced. One thing to note with each of our grade levels, we look at our subgroups, so that's counting our ESL and special ed kids. Plus, we count, some of them are doubled up, they're ESL with, with special ed. And so all of those kids are identified because they're not proficient. So if you look at any number of students in a grade level, you've got to take into consider right off the top. We have a higher percentage in our subgroups than most schools in our area. If you go, I'll just jump, because I think the biggest one, it really frightens me, because their scores are pretty low as well, but current seniors, if you jump to the second to last page, you're going to see a twenty-seven percent proficiency in language arts. Fifty-five percent of our senior class fall into either ESL or special ed. And so when you start actually breaking down these per kid, we always ask, are our kids that come through our system being proficient? And ninety, about ninety percent of the time, yes, the ones that are in our system, performing along the way, are being proficient. We don't have a, you know, here, there, we'll have a kid move or change from one side to the other, but the thing to look at is also is how they've moved along, and that's what we kind of really, really focus on, because we're looking at some of these going, okay, what's going on? And we look at the individual kids and say, oh, okay, that makes sense. So like this group, seventh grade, twenty-three, twenty-four percent. And in ours, when we don't have a hundred kids in a grade, and some of our grades are fifty-two kids, each kid represents two percent on this scale. You have five kids move from one side to the other side, that's a ten percent swing. It doesn't take much kids to move these numbers, so while they look alarming at times, once you actually dig into the data and start putting names on it and seeing where they're at, you can get a little, gain a little bit more understanding.
What percentage of that senior class, that's, half of them aren't proficient, have been in the system their whole period?
I'd have to go look. We've had, one of the things we've, we've really noticed, and we go back and look, and like Mr. Duggar was saying, our enrollment this year has increased, and if I go back and pull that data for enrollment, twenty kids have come in that are considered newcomers. They're coming from Guatemala, they're coming from, they're brand new, haven't been in school. And because they started the school year, they will be tested with our regular kids come spring and counted in this data. So I would have to go back and look, because it changes so much, but we have broken that down before and looked at kids that are, have been here the whole time, kids that have been less than five years. I've broken it down multiple times, just to figure out, is this a systemic thing we have to look at? Or is this because of our transition, the amount of kids we have that come and go from, coming into us from other countries? And we haven't seen twenty new kids. We haven't seen this level of newcomers for two years, since pre-pandemic. It really slowed down a lot, and all of a sudden, this year, we started one tomorrow, and we've got two more that will be starting- tomorrow, and we've got two more that will be starting, and they will be taking these tests with our regular kids. So, yeah, we've looked at that data, and we have that, and we can, we continue to look at it.
I'd challenge you by next meeting to come back with those numbers to put a clearer picture to this.
Yeah, we, we can break some of that down, for sure. We have it, we've got, I could show you some of the spreadsheet Sarah Kellogg, our instructional coach, puts together with our data and the kids, we track it by what courses they're in, because there's another anomaly that we know the answer to already, and that is 10th grade math. If you jump to 10th grade and look at mathematics, 33 are proficient, 33% plus 36% are proficient. Alarming, I'm going, what the heck's going on here? Well, 50% of them are in subgroups. And I also can go look, and 50% of them are also in our Part One, Part Two Algebra Series, which is algebra over a two-year period, because they need that support. The ninth grade ISAS test is designed in math that they have all completed algebra. So they're taking a test with all of algebra, and they've only gotten through half of that. They're not, they're not there yet. So we know that, and we're looking at our math series to see how we can push more kids into algebra without making them fail, obviously, and supporting them. And so the other thing, the other graphs that are very important is the green and blue, which are the second ones behind that. And that is a huge piece to us because we wanna see kids grow in their courses, and that shows, and that's very important to us because we've got kids that are growing, but the challenge is, where did they start their growth from each year? You know, if they're already a year behind and we're only growing a year, we're still behind. And how do you make up multiple years of education for especially some of our newcomers and things in a single year? It is very challenging, and we have so much going on in our buildings, in our building to help these kids that it's, it's frustrating on our end because we are working, the teachers are troubleshooting, we're putting things together, but then again, it's like, we come to these tests, and last year's were, were really, our post-pandemic first year scores after were better than this, and we're wondering, okay, is this a lag? A year later, did something happen, and are they now showing up because they didn't advance? Because that year, we would've had some kids that would've been in different spots, but we're gonna look into that a little bit. But these growth charts show that we're still making growth, our kids are moving. We look at each kid and we break it down and say, okay, is this kid moving in the right direction? How much did they gain? We don't get a lot of good data from the Iowa assessments as to what content, they're kind of clusters, and so we can't say, oh, this is where we missed it all. They don't know how to do fractions. It doesn't tell us a lot of that information, and so at the younger ages, and if I was to actually take eighth grade, and I don't have it all on here, but I have a chart that shows their three-year progression, because these guys came in as sixth graders in math, and I believe at that point, 36% of them as sixth graders were proficient in math. And we've been doing interventions in the junior high, both reading and math, and you can see, they have the highest scores right now in our building, because we've been doing a tremendous amount of interventions that normally don't occur at a junior high level, both, because we saw this need when they came as sixth graders, and we've been doing this for quite a few years now. We've seen huge growth in that particular group, so we're really gonna keep an eye on them to see how they continue to grow throughout the years, because we wanna know how our, how our programs are working. Absolutely, and that's, we're trying to figure out what's going on, and then we noticed they're all growing, and it's, the challenge is, is because they are growing, but to make up a year of, if they're a year and a half behind, and we're getting them through a year and a quarter, they're still not proficient. So how do we, without having three more months of school, how do we continue to move them forward and continue with that growth? Because they are moving in the right direction, and I was telling you about that, our score, 30% of that score, thank goodness, is measured with just growth. So they don't take us for just not proficient, they are giving us credit for the work our kids and our staff are doing on that score and saying, hey, you guys are working hard, these kids are moving, and they are growing, but they don't ever look at our kids and say, oh, this makes more sense, you know, 12 juniors got here three years ago. Are they gonna ever be proficient on an English language arts test? No, they're not, because we don't have enough time with them to get them to a proficiency level, because they haven't been in our system for, you know, very long. And so it's, it's quite, quite frustrating at times, but we look at this very carefully, we look at it more than this. Junior high level, we have STAR data, which we test them three or four times a year on both math and language arts, and that's what we use to decide our read intervention, which is 20 minutes a day, where they have specific tasks. They'll go to a classroom, and we've targeted them for a specific skill, and they'll work for three weeks on that specific skill that they've been missing. We're also doing that in the classroom with math, and we're actually going to start moving some kids during that read time, we're gonna have to change the name because it's not just about reading, it's gonna be about math as well, so we can target some skills for those students, and that's something we've been working on, I think, five years now, we, we've had that implemented, implemented, and it's showing really good results. You can see with that eighth grade group, they've been, we've been kind of hammering on them, and it's hard because they go to language arts class, they go to literacy class, and then we make them read for another 20 minutes, but it's obviously in their best interest because they need to be proficient readers to be successful at all levels after this. So some of the big action steps that we're working on, the math part, like I mentioned with that Algebra One, Part One and Part Two, that class, when we, if we go back five, six, seven years, we had one section of that, which, so you talk 20, 24 kids. Now we have two full sections of that, because we've got a higher group of kids with that need for, for more math support and a slower-paced math. What we gotta do is, we gotta look at how we're making sure they're ready, whether they're coming in from sixth grade to seventh grade, and how we can get more kids pushed into that traditional math pathway where we have freshmen completing Algebra One and not taking it over two years. And so we're trying to figure out some of our math pathways, we've been having some vertical discussions, we're starting them with the elementary to say, we need to understand how your math progression works, because we're, we're expecting X, Y, and Z at the seventh grade level, and we need to know that you are doing that and to what level, so that we can be prepared ourselves. And so we're having some really good discussions about what that looks like with that math, and then we're looking at our high school pathways and saying, what kids can we move to Algebra One? We need to push them, and that, if they, if we think they can make it, we can put them into Algebra One with supports in that Algebra One class, and not saying, well, you'll be better off over here in the slower math class, because for some, they get it quicker, and so I think we can, we, we need to be that, a little bit more flexible in that and moving kids up. We're gonna continue our seventh and eighth grade intervention processes, without a doubt, with the addition of math with that, and we're gonna be breaking down some of our individual student data to see what kids didn't make it, especially what we would consider a bubble kid. If they got a 5% higher score on their ISAS, they'd be proficient. Well, I just moved my score 2%. And so we're gonna look at some of those kids that we know are, call them a half a year behind, and see if we can somehow move them quicker to get them across that proficiency, proficiency line, which then a poor course improves our score. But the scores are important, however, we don't put all of our weight in those. We want our kids to grow, we wanna make sure they're getting the supports they needed, but we were excited to see that report could come out and see that we're right there with, with other school districts, and, and our kids are growing, but we don't ever get satisfied, we're, we're still looking at data and figuring out where we can, where we can move things and, and see what any kind of challenging spots are. We're continuing with our alignment of our standards and, and the teaching of the standards and the testing of them, that's our everyday Wednesday topics. Right now, we're having our staff analyze their assessments so that they are aligned with those standards, and there's not extra things on there that, you know, we, we used to all take tests, and you don't know where they got some of that stuff once in a while, because either they didn't teach it to you, or you didn't know, it was just like, oh, it was a book test, here, give it to them. Well, this is what we need to get down to the alignment, make sure that we're teaching and testing exactly what is required by the state, and so that's a continuous process because they keep coming up with new stuff for us to do, and it, it's challenging. But very good information in there, certainly some, some flags that we're looking at in depth, and, and actually having some cross-con, vertical discussions. We're also gonna be talking science as well, even though there's only a few groups that take the science test, so, but we know that's an area that we're also gonna be looking at. Again, lots of information, but I think it's important for you guys to see it, because that school report card came out two weeks ago, about, and I don't think people go and look at it, but people could. I know about it, you can search and kind of see how we compare, and it's nice to see that we're, we're in the mix anywhere around the area, some are higher, but some are actually lower that I thought would be higher, and it's nice to see that we're, we're right there.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Try to absorb all that information, though. Then move on to item number seven, Elementary Positive Behavior Support Teacher New Teaching Position.
When I came here in, in 2016, I think was the first year that the elementary had investigated the Positive Behavioral Supports Program, and it's come a long ways over the last few years, and I think the last part of that whole program would, to be, have somebody who could be in charge of some of the activities that go along with that, along with information I talked about in the job description here, that I collaborated with a couple of folks in, in other school systems that have a similar position, and, and they've had a lot of success with it. We feel that some of the funding levels that we could pay for this out of the federal Title IV, and then also some, some of the state at-risk allocations could pay for this position, but I do think, if you had a chance to look over the job description, it, it basically ties together a lot of different loose ends, and I think it'd be really good for our school system to move forward with this type of position.
What are you looking at for salary?
What's that?
What are you looking at for, for a salary cost?
Oh, it's whatever, we have a salary schedule for our teachers, and so it's basically years of experience and educational background. So then, whatever the person coming in with this job has whatever experience level and whatever educational level, they get put on the, the salary schedule. Our salary schedule starts at, I think, $36,000, and it just, it goes down from there, it increases annually, plus the amount of education they have. So right now, I can't say, because we don't know, we don't know, like, who we're gonna hire yet, but it'd be roughly zero to eight years, roughly, I mean, for a new hire, possibly, but if we have somebody on staff who has more time in it, then they'll, you know, they'll get their salary at that level. So I can't really answer that question, specifically what that number will be, so.
So if someone in the house wants it, they would transfer to that position?
Right.
And then we would have to hire?
Then we'd have to backfill
Okay.
that job, yeah. Typically, when we hire out of, out of district, the most we pay is eight years of experience, that's according to the master contract. So we get, we can kind of manage that one a little bit better than an internal transfer. And this kind of job, I think, would, an internal transfer might be better, because they know our school system and some of our programming that we do have, so.
It was maybe in here, but when is, when would you be wanting to fill this position?
This is for the 23, 24 school year, yeah. So we're, we'll probably post it soon and start the process of getting it filled. We've, we had really good luck last year when, when the board approved that early retirement package, that we were able to start advertising and hiring right away in January, and we got some really strong candidates early in the process, so we're hoping that we can maybe do the same thing here.
I was gonna make a motion to approve the Elementary Positive Behavior Support Teacher.
I'll second that. Okay, motion being seconded by Greg. To approve that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes. Move on to the second reading of the updated board policies.
These are, again, the second reading, and I put in the, the board letter that they are attributed to last year's updates with House File 802, Increase Transparency and Streamline Procedures for Parents to View and Challenge Instructional and Library Materials, that basically makes sure that we're in compliance with those new laws, so.
Would entertain a motion to approve the second reading of the policies?
I'll make the motion, second.
Motion by Greg, seconded by Eric, to approve the second reading of the updated board policies. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes. Elmkey County Mitigation Plan Resolution.
It authorizes, it authorizes me as emergency management coordinator to represent the school in the Hazard Mitigation Plan update, is basically what it does. And obviously, the benefit of being in the Hazard Mitigation Plan is that you guys are then eligible for certain federal funding, typically from the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which has some good funds for down the road and stuff. So what I will do actually with all the school districts is, they're all gonna, basically, you'd be the second ones that would approve this, and I have Eastern Elmkey next week, and I assume they're gonna approve it too, is basically what I'll do is I'll reach out to all the school principals, superintendents, kind of lay out what I think are some ideas, let you all know, and basically get your guidance and your feedback to see if there's anything that you're looking at five to 10 years that may fall within some of those grant parameters, but like pretty basic and stuff. So again, this just would authorize me to represent you in a hazard mitigation planning process, otherwise you'd have to have someone coming to the meetings and stuff like that. So I did this for you guys five years ago, all the school districts, so again, hopefully should not be too big of an issue, so I'm here for it, so.
Look for any volunteers who wanna show up to the meeting, otherwise I look, I'd entertain a motion that Cory takes care of this for us.
I make a motion that Cory would take care of this for us?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Cory.
Yep.
Thanks, Cory.
Request to amend the School Budget Review Committee, amount of $129,727.50.
So basically, the next two items are money that we are spending this year, basically, so that we get spending authority to cover that cost. So the, the total amount are amounts that are already incorporated into our budget for this year that we're getting to get authority on, and so.
In, in the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the amounts listed in 10 and 11.
I'll second it.
Motion by Amy, seconded by Greg. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same side. 10 and 11 pass. Items for the December Board Meeting.
So we have to pick a new president for the 2023 calendar year and set our dates, and
We have to.
Yes. So be thinking about who you want to have as president and vice president of the board for '23, and we'll do that next month.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a question, looking back to the September Board Meeting. We discussed, Greg brought it up, the Nick Sargent reimbursement to state fair. That didn't come back in October. I understand that has been paid.
There's some emails that went around, and I was instructed to put it on the invoices that were approved the following month, and they went through that process.
I did not see the emails. And with today, I didn't get board packet.
Do you have specific questions, or?
It was discussed that day that it was possible family vacation. Nick wasn't a faculty member of the district at the time. Uh, Nick wasn't a faculty member of the district at the time.
Um, his FFA contract went through August thirty-first and during that time was the state fair and that's where he attended. And he submitted a purchase order to, um, for the hotel rooms and for the travel, which he has done in previous years. Um, it was put on his personal card and requested for reimbursement, which is not the typical process. But those are expenses that are, were incurred every year for, for the state fair.
I've had a couple fairly unhappy parents reach out.
I guess I received a, an email explanation back from Mr. Duggar that, uh, but I did not send that around to everyone else and I probably should have. But it explained what, uh, Melissa just said. Um, and I too, you know, this, one of those things that I too was under the impression from our meetings earlier this year that he was done as of July first, um, with all responsibilities. And so that's why those questions came up, uh, when I brought them up at the September meeting, when, when we saw those, those issues. So the fact that the, you know, and I didn't, I guess I just took it as that's what we were told and that's the way it's going to be. But going forward, I think that information needs to be made clear ahead of time, um, instead of having to be brought up in this manner. Uh, and that's why we're questioning because we were getting a lot of, um, messages back and forth.
Well, I would, I would recommend that if you, like the email exchanges that we had, I think was a really good idea, like ask ahead of time so we can come up with answers sooner than later. I guess that's where we're at so that you guys are informed.
But, but I also know Eric's frustration because you, we had said at that meeting that we'd be brought back up in October and it wasn't at the meeting. So we probably should have said something then because, uh, um, you did say in September that
I'm, I'm, I'm new to the board here, um, on how policies and things go. Um, I, I sat there and didn't say anything at the last meeting, I should have. I, I thought I was out of line, maybe, I, I don't know. It's, it seems like there's a lot of stuff that's, we just, we don't discuss to, to a degree that I thought we would.
Can you be a bit more specific as to what you're asking advanced notice of or change? I mean, the, the FFA contract has always run because it's a unique contract along with some of the band work that does, do, they do like summer band lessons and things. Those additional contracts run through August thirty-first because of the timing. So I mean, if there's specific information, I would gladly answer it. Or if you have questions, please just, you know, just give me a call or what, whatever. I'm not sure, um, specifically what, what it is you're, you're asking for, but.
State Fair twenty-one, Nick was non-existent.
That
Connor accessed the decor advisor and the Al Qaeda advisor to get his registration forms for state fair and now to have him throw in a thousand dollar bill that, ooh, I'm there taking care of business. Bad sign, I'm sorry.
If there is a question with something on or not on the agenda, how much time do we have to, like when you send out the board packet or whatever, do we have to get something added to the agenda?
Typically it should be on the agenda before it's posted, so prior to when Mr. Duggar sends it out. But there are some times, you know, where you've seen an amended agenda or things like that. So if the board would approve to amend an agenda at the night of the meeting, then it can be added.
I mean, like if we get it on Thursdays, if one of us has an issue, I mean, Friday, get ahold of you or somebody and just say, okay, I want it on the agenda. If that's simple, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I would, yeah. And I guess even before the meeting, when we do it, we can, if we got something, bring it up. Yeah, we'll, we'll put it on there. I mean, it, I know I kind of rushed to the beginning part most time anyways, but we haven't, we haven't had too many issues with the agenda, so.
And if there's questions, always, I mean, it doesn't mean if you ask ahead of time and we provide information that it still can't be discussed at the board table. But we can provide you more information so that the discussion can be more involved, if, if that makes sense.
Does the payment with personal credit card happen quite often?
Um, no.
So can we make that policy where it doesn't happen? I mean, if it's not okay through the school ahead of time, it's not happening? That would be more, at least we know more about it.
We can, uh, we can review our, the, the purchasing policies and I can definitely put those in for December to, to review. I think that might be a good idea, actually. And, uh, just so you guys are aware of the procedures that we have in place and that we've been doing for years now, um, so.
Is there a spending limit? I mean, can I go out and charge ten thousand my credit card and expect to get reimbursed? I mean, I mean, that's what I'm
Yeah, we've got
And there, there was a, a purchase order that was approved prior to the expenditures being made in August for the trip to the state fair to cover the hotel rooms and the travel expenses, which is what Mr. Zercher was reimbursed for.
So possibly going forward, we can be more straightforward, streamlined.
We'll bring in the, the board policy on, and the forms even that you use. I mean, we use them all the time and
There's
it's very, it's very structured, very, yeah.
It used to be very common, we, because we didn't have school credit cards when I got here. It was very common that we had to do I swear sheets. We just threw them away the other day because we haven't had to use one. We've got electronic copies anyway. But that's been, you know, the only time we run into things is if the teacher has approval through a PO, we've approved it, and we don't have a way of getting them one of our credit cards. They'll go to an event and, you know, they maybe have requested it, saved it on their credit card because they needed to get a room or something. Then we usually send one of the school issued ones with them. There's been times where they wouldn't accept those because you never know with the hotels. Well, that doesn't have your name on it. We've ran into that and so, but it's usually, they will not get reimbursed if they did not do a purchase order previous. They will not get reimbursed. We've, unfortunately, that's, that's happened, but they know that. And we've been very clear because we do have all this electronic stuff now and it's so much cleaner and such a good track. But like in that instance, it's summertime, Mr. Zercher is, we're off contract, we're not always here. Had, he had access to the credit card, he knew. I mean, that, he should have and that would have saved all of this because it was all preauthorized. It comes out of FFA funds that they fundraised for. And so, um, and, and I, you know, that's why we don't like doing that because it looks like it's not preauthorized and it, and it was. I mean, he turned in all the right paperwork previously. He just had to use his own credit card because of the situation.
Is there any board policy that prevents taking family members? I, truthfully, I believe, I mean, family members, I think should get to go, but I, I don't think we should have to buy hotel rooms. One room would be
I'll speak just on the experiences that we've, we've had and the, the situations that are. I'll use an example, um, if we send the kids to state wrestling, we have to get, we won't, if we have to get X amount of rooms, we got to have a coach's room, kids have to be separate. If there's only one coaching and they have two beds and the kids are in the other room and their spouse and kids are, want to go, we're getting the room anyway. That's never been not allowed, but we haven't ever said, oh, we're getting the family a room. That, that doesn't occur. And so that's been common in all of my twenty-four years of experience at every district I've been. But it's not an extra room, it's, you get one room and that's common all over the place. Right, we're not getting an extra one, it's just
Anybody want to adjourn? No. For any more discussion?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
I'll second it.
Motion by Eric, seconded by Greg to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.